Welcome everyone to the zoning workshop for the town of Newbury. Today's date is the 6th of January, 2020. I don't think it's necessary for folks to introduce ourselves since we all seem to know who we are. I hope everyone had a good New Year. With that being said, what's Mr. Andrew, Martha, do you want to start with some of the comments?
Yeah, I'm going to hand out the zoning amendment schedule. Some of you have seen this before, some of you have not. And I was wondering if it would be helpful for me to just give a brief overview of the processes.
Please, please.
Don't be great for me.
Okay. We never be able to speak.
Alright. So, the planning board is responsible for submitting zoning amendments to town meeting for adoption. Zoning needs to be approved at town meeting by two-thirds majority, so sometimes it's on a relatively high bar. And the process is pretty strictly outlined by state law in terms of the deadlines that need to be met, what the process is. So the process is that normally the planning board is the one who initiates a zoning amendment, and it gets referred to the board of selectmen who then need to refer it back to the planning board for public hearing. If the public hearing doesn't happen, it can't go on the warrant. And if any of the deadlines aren't met, the Attorney General's office, which reviews all zoning amendments from towns, will kick it back, and that has happened. Fortunately, it was before my time, not since I've been here, but there was a case where the required timeframes weren't met, and it got kicked back just for that reason and had to go before town meeting again. So the dates are actually on the schedule. So when the planning board proposes amendments to the selectmen, the selectmen have to refer them back to the planning board for public hearing within 14 days. And then the public hearing can be really pretty much anytime up until the town meeting, but we try to do it far enough in advance so that everything is set when the warrant gets voted on by the selectmen. It has to be noticed in the paper twice, the first notice at least 14 days prior to the hearing. And notice also has to be mailed to Department of Housing and Community Development, NVPC, and the planning boards of all budding towns. If any non-resident property owners have asked to be notified of public hearings regarding zoning changes, they also need to be notified, but we don't have any who would ask that. Public hearing has to be within 65 days of when the selectmen votes to refer the amendments back to the planning board. And then town meeting must be no more than six months after the date of the planning board public hearing. So those are kind of the time constraints that we're dealing with. On the agenda, on the schedule here, I did include the regularly scheduled selectmen's meetings because what we do will then be tied into what their schedule is in order for us to kind of coordinate with them. So on this schedule, in order to meet, have a little bit of wiggle room and to meet these deadlines, I've actually got us proposing zoning amendments to the selectmen for their February, well, actually at our February 5th meeting, they would then go to the selectmen on the 6th, the selectmen would vote to refer them back to us for public hearing on the 11th. And this assumes a public hearing date of March 4th. This could be a little optimistic given where we are right now. So I think we could move it back to March 18th if we need to. And I need to confirm with Tracy the town meeting day and whether the selectmen will be voting on the town meeting warrant. I'm assuming that the town meeting will be on April 28th, and the selectmen vote on the warrant on the 24th of March to allow for the proper posting times. Town meeting needs to be posted at least 14 days, seven days prior to an annual town meeting, 14 days prior to a session. So there are a few unknowns based on prior statements.
This, thank you, this is helpful because it gives us a guide of what our March 18th is on. As you can see, we're probably on a kind of a fast course right now because we have three and a half weeks to meet our first date threshold. With that, we were talking about a couple of different things. You know, we look at wireless, dimensional, solar, how is zoning going to be needed. So I think focusing in on the things that are achievable is probably, probably makes the most sense. And we'll talk in a sec about wireless. That's probably very achievable since we have contracted places that offer good over there. And then I think, Larry, we've been working on the dimensional, which is probably something that we really need to put into place essentially, considering potential things that are going to be happening throughout the time. Solar is going to be difficult, a threshold to achieve, housing is going to be difficult, not that we don't work on these projects. And green communities designation is something I think that has to be in our pipeline. But again, I think the last three things that we should be working on, but I'm not sure if these are thresholds that we're going to try to achieve by our February 5th deadline.
The green communities may be achievable. I'll fill out my mail-in that after we go over this. I have a timely email from Neil Duffy, the green communities coordinator for our region.
Great, great.
So solar, zapping, housing related is out, and zoning is maybe?
Yeah, not that they're out, they're just going to be, I think the targets that we're going to shoot for, for this, for our three and a half million people, yeah, of us.
Right, yeah. And just to clarify, when we refer to, when we refer the amendments, proposed amendments to the selectmen, we don't need to have all the language sorted out, but we need to have at least enough of a description of what we're proposing that they have a good idea of how it goes. And I think the solar one is particularly complicated. We've been batting this around for a while, and any changes would be partly in response to what we went through with the Main Street solar project.
A better definition of what the state's position is? Because when we started this recently, the state's position is kind of complex as to what their guidelines are. So Martha, do you want to start with having a discussion about what you thought of wireless?
Sure. I've been communicating with a guy named David Maxon from Nice and Curve Wireless. And I might have mentioned this before, they actually did consulting for us, for the ZBA, a proposal, but this before the ZBA years ago. I think it might have been the one that was proposed at Iron Moon Farm on High Road that ultimately got denied. But they are, they are, they, I guess, the knowledgeable people, several people recommended them to me. And so I got the scope of work from them to do a review of our warrants by law, to do a computer modeling of the coverage of the four major carriers in town, and also to do a drive test to confirm that, that computer modeling, to see if it holds up. We know that we've got Old Town Hill class quite a shadow on sort of the more southern portion of High Road, so we've got a known dead spot down there. We've heard that there is gaps in coverage down Plum Island. And so it's going to be really interesting to see how the computer modeling and the drive test actually bear out people's experience. Total contract including the drive test is $9,500. Tracy has confirmed that we can cover that all professional and technical and has signed an authorization, which I sent to David Maxon last Thursday. And I'm waiting just to hear back from him on the schedule. I think if the board is in agreement with this, I think the most efficient way to go would be for David and me and maybe one other board member who's interested to kind of do the initial portion of it, get a report from him, and then propose it or present it to the entire board. He seemed to feel that would work in terms of meeting our deadline. And so I want to be able to move this forward as quickly as possible without having to be bound by planning board meeting schedule.
And so he's, he's up to date as to what our timeframe is?
He is up to date on our timeframe, and you know, his only comment was, you know, if we can hit the ground running in January, that would be great, they can meet it. So he's got this in hand, and I emailed him right before the meeting to make sure that he got it and to try to set up the schedule.
And just for Woody and Mary, the reason that this is a concern is we have some public safety issues with regards to having dead spots in town. So it's concerning from that perspective. And a lot of people are migrating, I believe, from home lines for a number of reasons, cost effectiveness, and go into a single, we carry our technology with us. So it's an issue that's significant, and that's why we really want to kind of promote this and get this ball rolling and understood.
Right. And one of the selectmen in particular, Jeff Walker, has been very keen on getting this moving forward. I think largely for the reasons that Pete just mentioned, the public safety, and also home occupations and people getting rid of their landlines. So, you know, more and more of the cell technology is really critical. One thing I'm hoping we'll come out of this, you know, not only an update of our bylaw, which we updated slightly last year, just to bring it in compliance with some federal, changes in federal law, but I think that if it can address ways in which we could deal with cell coverage other than, you know, erecting towers or whatever, that would be helpful. So we'll see what he has to say in terms of.
Has he mentioned anything like the already telephone pole mounted? Like the plans for the least apartment?
Repairs.
We'd be okay.
We haven't talked about that specifically, but I'm hoping that'll be part of the conversation. I'm a little concerned because Verizon was proposing one for Plum Island Center, and there was a lot of neighborhood opposition due to, you know, probably some, some mischievous beliefs about the impact of these things. So I'm hoping that he can also provide us with the information and the expertise to possibly even make a presentation at town meeting.
Education is key. That's the best way to start. Don't misinterpret what the intention is and what the goal is.
Right.
And that's why I think we've all downed a lot, having an idea, bringing it through a vote of process, getting it on the mark, then having a town discussion. If there isn't appropriate education, it can die very, very quickly.
Right.
Mary, it's not your father's wireless.
Right, right.
Right. Things have changed. These guys, they adopted our wireless communications by law back in 2000, 2001. Things have changed a lot since then in terms of technology and everything else, so.
2001.
Yeah, we really need to come in next year. I was actually hoping for that, yeah. And Martha Biden, who was our associate for a while, was the person who was instrumental in pulling that together.
She went up to there, she went.
Right, right. So it was in its, you know, the technology was in its infancy at that point, and so much has changed. And we're also bound by, you know, certain federal provisions. If there is lack of coverage, we can't deny it in a certain location because that's my understanding, so.
So the report is $9,500?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's a study?
Right, it's a study, but it also includes a proposed, a recommended revision of our bylaw. So that's what we'll be taking at town meeting, as well as the report to back up that proposed revision.
Just goes with.
Yeah.
Okay.
Books in the service area.
Yeah.
Best country.
Yeah. So they are, I received multiple recommendations, these are the guys.
Okay, cool. So probably people will come on board as soon as the education process is done or it's started fast, right? Hopefully they go out, this isn't, you know, you publish wireless and here's what's going on.
Right, right.
Hopefully.
As far as the educational piece, do we have the ability to put it on the town's website? Do we have the ability to put a link to it, to a YouTube, so that we can do a YouTube and put it out there as like a PSA? You know, some sort of vehicle where you can say, hey, here it is, look, look and listen.
Right.
What, do you like ride along, you mean?
Yeah, well, not necessarily ride along, but you know, a summary of what the report is and the people who put it together, why the recommendations are, and even what the recommendations are for the bylaw. So people have the ability, and we can point them to it, whether it's in video or it's in print, two different. Do we have that? Can we have that?
We certainly can. So it'll be a matter of getting it, getting it together and getting it up there.
Let's make that a target because that can be so useful as a tool for other stuff.
Yeah, because a visual sometimes has more, has more impact than just an audio.
I know. Think about when you're, if you're on a conference call, you know, you're on mute, you walk around the room, you might listen to it. But when you're tied into an interactive where you have to view the video screen, your attention is so much greater. Safety than watch TV. You going to say something? Go, sure. Okay.
Your local media seems really good, so we'll get that one.
Yeah, I mean, I could certainly work with Susan to get something. I think we haven't done it before. What we do for our public hearings for zoning amendments, we hold a public hearing, we'll put together a, you know, some sort of a PowerPoint presentation. But I think that if we can get out ahead of it and get it up on the website, and David Maxon may already have something that he could provide us, that we could include as part of the package for town meeting, and then Susan may could, you know, get it on our Facebook page and, you know, Twitter and stuff like that to let people know that it's out there.
That's great. I think that's, that's how people do their stuff.
Have they kind of have their schedule set as opposed to set time or?
Larry, will you say something?
No. I think it's a great idea.
We give them all the information and they can start putting their questions together.
Right, right.
Instead of coming into a kind of.
You know, historically, we've had, unless there's a real special interest, we've had almost no attendance at our public hearing. But again, if we can get the information out there for our public side, then.
We could preempt that on, I mean, not, not legal or anything, but just cut down the time that won't be doing it. People know in advance.
Possible, or at least get people come who realize it's being discussed and come to, you know, inform themselves that that's, that's being done, so.
I know if you're on the beach, I know if you're on the beach up in Island, there's no point in having a phone most of the time. Just try to service.
Which is pretty crazy when you think of it.
You get me in the houses somehow, you get a little, you get one bar or something, but I know if you're on the beach.
On the different side?
Just in the past, I don't know, going back five years ago, but I've never, when I've had a phone down to Island, the phone doesn't work. Mine hasn't.
And I'm thinking of the reservation.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've, I've actually gotten phone calls from a lot of reservations. No problem. But, you know, I think a lot of it really does still depend on who your carrier is, some of them are others. So this, you know, this report will probably show that, and again, it's not going to solve our problem. I think it's still, you know, up to the carriers to then, you know, come in. But at least it will hopefully expand the options for them.
And pointing this into the carrier, you say, look, you know, this is your competitor, X, Y, Z. You've got the same tower, you're the same location, you say, what are you pressing with? Because of the height, it's all like, you know, it's like, what's, what's weird about it? It's just, it's almost embarrassing, but, you know. Hey, come on, we've got to speed here.
Right, well, it's a, it's really difficult if we, if we don't have proper coverage. And right now, under our zoning, the only place that we allow cell towers is on Route 1 Business, the White Industrial District. It is a boundary down to basically Boston Road. We've got a few towers outside of that, there's Grandfather, there's the other Stockton Road, and there's actually one down at the Newbury Golf Course.
And then southeast.
I mean, nothing like that in southeast. Old Town Hill, they were casting a shadow, that really creates issues, so.
The water tower, is there, is there a cell, cell tower?
Wait, what?
Yeah, I see all kinds of stuff, both of that. That's not considered a power though, right?
Well, you know, I think it's probably outside of what we really covered in our, in our bylaw, but.
But it's a great point.
Yes.
A true issue to be brought up because whoever owns that tower.
It's a likely one.
Is benefiting from the rental. And so, again, there's this kind of overlap of community safety responsibility and a private interest with a public benefit.
Right. And there have been some proposed for other locations. There was one proposed, I think it was just last year, for Pearson Plaza, it was outside of our land area. It didn't go forward, I'm not quite sure, they never presented anything. I don't know if it was because it wasn't, didn't meet our zoning at the time, but the proof that they needed, it was a gap in coverage, but.
Study would be helpful.
Yeah, I think the study would be very helpful. So anyway, I'm pleased that they can meet our deadlines and hopefully get the pack up for town meeting.
So is there someone that would be interested in working on this project with consultant Martha Emma?
And if not, that's fine too, we'll just bring it to.
I can help out.
So, so are you comfortable with, with?
So that's down now.
So that folds now into dimensional, talking about educating our, our community.
Okay.
Larry, I see the infomercial already.
Well, I put together some notes here, really for discussion purposes at this point. For the benefit of our newer members, the first item has to do with lot dimensions. And what kind of brought this to the fore is we had an informal submission. I won't get into the weeds or the technicalities of it. But basically showed what was purported to be a subdivision that met our requirements that had these torture shaped lots where, you know, the actual building envelopes were, I think something like four tenths of a mile off of High Road, with a multiple 90 degree turn. So, and really no room for driveways at all, which I felt, and I think probably most of the board felt, presented some public safety issues, you know, safety issues for, not only for the occupants of any proposed buildings and for the first responders as well. So these were what I generally have described as pork chop lots, where you have a narrow strip of frontage, or you have, you require a frontage on a road, and then these narrow torturous driveways back to the main building area. So, and I think in order to address that, it would be simple enough mechanically. It would just be a matter of adding a footnote to the table of dimensional regulations. We haven't talked to town council about that yet, but I think that's all that would be required. So these are examples.
Hand that out, in a second.
And you can also share what your experience was on the community situation with Walter.
Yeah, well, it's exactly what, what we have here. I worked for both West Newbury and Andover prior to retirement. And so I came up, oddly enough, the Andover, West Newbury examples show up here. Martha came up with some. And I've sort of, I, I put them on here sort of in the, in the order that, and again, these are, these are choices. We wouldn't adopt all of these, but, and these are simply examples. It doesn't mean it's the only way to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish here. And I have sort of listed them in the way, the ones that I favored first and towards the end. And the first was Andover, which says that each lot shall have a width of not less than 80% of the required frontage at all points between the street line along which the frontage of the lot is measured and the furthest point of the rear wall of the dwelling upon such lot. And our planner pointed out, I think appropriately, that there's a problem with that in that you don't always know where the, where the building is going to be located. So I think that's a legitimate concern. I suppose you could argue that that's the builder's problem, but you know, where they, you know, making the dwelling, the construction fit the requirements of the zoning by law. But I think Martha's point is well taken. It leads to a certain amount of uncertainty. The next is the Newbury report example, which basically requires that a square containing 80% of the minimum frontage requirement is located, has to be placed within the lot with at least one point of the square touching on the required street frontage. In other words, you have to have a building envelope, I guess, at least, at least 80% of the required frontage that at least has a connection to the, to the roadway where you're taking your frontage. I don't know that it would necessarily require that the building be constructed within that envelope.
Right, I don't think it would.
But at least what you have is, you, you don't have the, again, the pork chop.
Right, or the hockey sticks.
Hockey stick, yeah, type lot. So I, I think that's a good example. The next one is from West Newbury, which, now, West Newbury has a reduced frontage lot special permit, but this is the language they use for that special permit, which I think could be, also be used, you know, just generally for our purposes. And that requires the width of the lot shall be equal to at least 90% of the required frontage at the front yard setback, and further, at no point shall the distance between the lot lines be less than 40 feet. So now, I'm not sure that that last provision about no distance between the lot lines be less than 40 feet necessarily works for our purposes. But the idea that you could put a restriction that requires at least 90% of the frontage to the front setback, which would be what, I think, 40 feet most of the time, or is it only districts in the month? Or is it something less than that? But again, you've got to have at least this strip of land is the idea, that has a certain minimum required width in relation to the required frontage. The last is Grove Lynne's example, which I don't think works because it calls for a circle with a diameter of 80% of the applicable required frontage located within the lot lines. And there's no relation to that, to the, to the roadway, to the frontage. In other words, it doesn't have to touch on the, the, the street or road that you're taking your frontage from.
Right.
So it wouldn't necessarily prohibit the type of thing that we're trying to deal with.
Right, so basically you could kind of imagine a snake, or you could have a hockey stick at the frontage and then a very narrow strip, and then it would bulge out. So you could get that, that circle in there and then narrow down again. So, you know, I think for this one, unless we were to do something like set a minimum lot width between the frontage and the circle, we wouldn't be actually solving the problem that we're trying to solve.
And then lastly is Amesbury, and it's brilliant here just for, for, just an example. Their Amesbury requires that the minimum lot width from the frontage line to the rear, to the rear setback shall be equal to or greater than the minimum required frontage. Well, that just wouldn't work for us. I mean, basically you need a square lot.
Right, right, a rectangular lot. And given that we're starting in many cases with some pretty funky shaped lots, I think it would really, it would, it would be unreasonable to try to really do that.
They're not, they're not quite dealing with the same kind of land issues that we are.
So I, my inclination is to think that the Newbury report example, or at least something akin to that, is probably there for the best. But again, we're not, we're not bound by any of this. These are simply examples for discussions, see which way we want to go.
So for clarification, the minimum lot area for a single family dwelling is 4,000 square feet, which is just 40,000, which is just shy of an acre.
Right, so builders acre.
Right, okay. So we're going, you know, we're following the mandate of acre, acre size lots with 125 foot of frontage for two family residents, serve with public water supply, 60,000 square feet. And then for one that is a well, 80,000 square feet, which is two acres.
Right, but the frontage requirements for all three are the same.
125.
Right, so 80% of that is 100 feet. So if we were to, you know, go with the Newbury report example, and I apologize, I was going to try to actually do some diagrams showing, you know, how that, that 100 by 100 square could potentially work depending on how it hits the frontage and how it's placed, to see if that in fact makes sense for us. But I, I agree with Larry. I think out of all of these examples, this one seems to make the most sense. So basically it would require some, you know, a distance at least 100 feet back from the frontage that would be some reasonable building area. The one thing we talked. The one thing we, we talked about is whether they're, you know, what are the unintended consequences of doing that.
So let's talk about those. What are some of those concerns?
Well, it's probably, we don't know what we don't know, you know. You know, one thought, it might be to have Joseph take a look at it.
Right.
See, see what he thought, you know. And, and, and maybe, maybe we don't need to do this either, I mean, we, we do have a lot of, you know, fairly broad discretion when it comes to denying something for public safety and stuff. But there's always, you know, Murphy's Law, what will go wrong, what can go wrong, will go wrong.
Right, and I, you know, I think it would be helpful to, to have some guidelines for people coming in, so that we don't end up in situations where everybody's feeling frustrated, because we've been there recently, and I think that.
That's very time consuming, emotionally draining, and you get to an end point that really people aren't happy with. So if we have, I think, more defined, reasonable expectations, then something's going to be.
One thing in an extreme case, I, I can't imagine any hardship that would be involved with meeting this that wasn't related to the topography and soil conditions or shape of the lot. In which case, the variance would be available for the ZB.
So there is relief.
I think there is relief, you know, the variance would, would be available.
And that would be the safety net or the opportunity for something to be developed with such approach. I think having, you know, something much more significant than what we have, and I live on a pork chop.
So.
You know, and, and, you know, I could see more, more of that, of that happening, especially with long strips, you know. I'm thinking of highway, I don't know, coming up, and all this funkiness.
Okay, so someone said to turn it, what the heck is a pork chop?
Well.
I can visualize it, but hang.
Larry's going to draw it.
You know, I'm not a very good artist, let me, let me start over. Might look something like this. That's a lot of pork chops. So, so you got your frontage, and then, again, an example.
I'm sorry?
A hundred and twenty-five foot.
Yeah, that's the meat, that's the bone, that's, that's the frontage.
Okay.
And, and the example we saw recently had.
This, this is the driveway, this is coming off the road, right?
Uh, it can be either way, yeah.
So the road's there, okay. This is, this is the driveway coming in, and this is the, this is the lot where, you know, the structures.
Well, that's like a subdivision.
What, what we saw.
A lot of them.
What we saw recently is something.
Did you ask?
Went something like this, then there was, it was a cul-de-sac. And then with all these lots coming off of it, this is a very poor example, and all the building was back here a quarter, four tenths of a mile from High Road. With three or four ninety degree turns with fire trucks and.
Right, and so if I may, some of that.
She, she could probably do it better.
So, you know, they had their frontage on High Road, but it only came back about five feet.
Right, right.
And then, you know, went back, for discussion's sake, about twelve, twelve feet wide, back like this, and then, you know, blossomed into the building lot, back here. So, you know, it's this kind of a situation, it seems like they really, you know, really kind of subverted the intense intention here. I guess the, the one thing I'm still struggling with myself is, is it a little too draconian to, you know, to say we've got to have this hundred foot square somehow.
Yeah, to what end?
Based on the lots, you know, that configuration.
Right, you know, do you set some minimum examples, like maybe you need to maintain eighty percent of the frontage for forty feet back? Or, and have a minimum lot width of, of forty feet, and then maybe do what? What was it, Amesbury, put the circle in there and roll it on? I, I don't know, I mean, I think we don't want to tie, we don't want to tie developers' hands or subdivision's hands, but we also want to have something which will be reasonable lots that can support development and address public safety concerns.
Okay, so, so the end game here is public safety for us, right?
That's what we're going to say.
Certainly for our first responders.
Well, for the first responders and the occupants.
Well, okay, good, that's important, I mean, you know, okay. So the deal breaker for a contractor is, well, you have to have access to a property that's huge. So they want least amount of access in certain lots?
What the developers, what they're trying to do is to maximize the number of units that they can build on a lot, and that, that has led to some pretty.
Next much profits.
Indeed.
So.
Configurations to get the one twenty-five.
Got it. Okay.
So that's the key, that's, that's like the entry point, you have to have a hundred and twenty-five, and then how do you get the lot out of it? And it's the how do you get the lot out of it that I'm concerned. So let's, let's just back into this in a different way. If our concern is public safety, and the, the, the number that seems to just float up to my head right away is a minimum of twenty feet. If we're going, if we're going to talk about, you know, if we had to have some apparatus, most driveways are less, if we had to have some sort of apparatus go down for them to save the pass by, you know.
Well, at a high speed, right?
You know, but, you know, even if it wasn't paid. I don't know where I'm going with this, but I thought, I think.
It depends on the length too, and this is a conversation I, I want to have with Chief Janbrun. You know, are there, for certain length driveways, are there, and this gets into the driveway portion of this. You know, are there, there then sort of related widths that they would like to see? We know that for those really, really long driveways that we've seen recently, they wanted a minimum of twenty feet wide. So the two vehicles can pass each other and they don't get stacked up.
Because the moving truck can't get in there, the fire truck won't get in there.
Moving truck can't get in there.
Yeah, if it can't turn around in there as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
I think those levers I know.
So we could pass them, the moving truck's as big as the fire truck.
Yeah, height wise, so let's just kind of slide into the driveway thing, to see if that helps us kind of with this discussion.
Right, right, so.
Yeah, the, this is also the same example we had. One of the ways they were trying to get, again, I don't want to get too far into the weeds and the technicalities of it. One of the ways they were trying to get around our subdivision control law and the requirement for a common driveway was to put three abutting driveways. And this, and the lot, for most of these lots, the, the lot width was the width of the driveway.
Twelve, twelve feet.
Three, three levers. So, and the driveway section, and this is, and you know. Right now, there's a provision that says driveways for single or two family residents must have a minimum of nine feet. And Martha and I had talked about this, and we were considering whether or not we could amend that to require that driveways for single or two family residents which exceed a certain length should have a minimum greater width.
Right.
And we need to talk to the chief about that and see what he thinks and what would be appropriate. And then the, the next section we would think about amending on the driveway bylaw is to require that no driveway be closer than ten feet to an abutting property. That would, for, from a public safety point of view, you don't want to have two driveways coming side by side, allowing it to the roadway. And it would, it would give you room for things like site buffering, stormwater management, snow storage, and things like that during, during the winter. So those are, those are the other two suggestions in the notes there.
Snow storage, I'm trying to look at that, it's huge.
Hmm.
Really is. Let me just go back to the, a theory, a theory of them three driveways side by side.
And where do you have to go about?
Right. Lock it longer and take it out and push it all the way down to the end.
So, I think, so this helps to, to fit that together, and I think the, the length is key. You know, what is that magic number from the, from fire safety standpoint? That we have to think about, you know, them getting apparatus and then pulling hoses if it's near a hydrant, how far that's going to be. Recently, when you look at some of these fires that have taken place on the news, and it's really pretty devastating, you know. The one that happened last week in Concord.
Concord.
Right?
Oh, yeah.
You know, and, and here, they couldn't get, they couldn't get water.
Pressure.
Couldn't get water.
Yeah.
And we don't want that scenario to happen here. Because, I mean, as it is, our resources are good resources, but we can't, we have to be reasonable about what they can do. So I think that discussion is paramount.
And we know that the chief is concerned about water pressure in certain parts of town, and yes, they'll bring a tanker truck in, but still.
They need to work.
Yeah, absolutely.
Most situations, they need to work.
So this, so, these other towns, Larry. I mean, they've already gone through the slot process, the slot process. So, our goal is the same as theirs, correct?
Yeah, I think so, yeah, but every town's a little bit different.
Okay, and respect.
Ames, Amesbury and Newbury, I'll just, soil conditions, topography, lot shape.
Whether they accept it, whether they don't accept it.
Whether they have. Storage or not.
The lot sizes, that there's lot shapes that they're starting with, and irregularly shaped lot to begin with, and you're trying that, say, the area that you could divide it into, and you've got the frontage. Still trying to do it in some way that makes, you know, makes sense.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, Amesbury, for example, my impression at least, because it doesn't have the agricultural history Newbury has. It was more of a mill town and a carriage house, you know, so the lots tended to be, I think, more regularly laid out, so they could get away with.
Standardized.
Yes, standardized, and frankly, I think they were probably just trying to cut down on development, but that's a different discussion. But where Newbury, you know, it's historically been agricultural community, and pastures have been bought and sold and divvied up, and, you know, whatever. So we have, in certain parts of town, very irregularly shaped lots.
So following that logic, would West Newbury be more ten town?
I, I think it is, yeah, I remember too.
Okay, but the, what you're going towards Newbury Port.
Yeah, Byfield and West Newbury vary somewhat.
Right.
And, and, and the, and the West Newbury provision has a lot to recommend it, in that it's, you don't need to be an engineer to understand it, you know.
Right.
Uh, the only thing I would say is, because remember, their purpose is, they, they have a provision for a reduced frontage lot special permit. So they have a lot more discretion, I mean, if, I don't think you would want the provision in there, about no point, should between lot lines should be less than forty feet, because again, you could have a, a lot that, that has plenty of, plenty of land and dimension and good land, and then it, you know, tapers to a point at the end.
Right.
Um, so, I, I mean, if we wanted to go this route, I would just take out that last provision about.
So is all West Newbury?
Yes, right. You know, the width of a lot should be equal to at least ninety percent of the required frontage at the front yard setback. I mean, that might be enough with just, um.
Okay.
You know, with, with the additional provisions regarding driveways.
And what about this special permits? Is that, do you agree with that?
No, no.
Okay, so that comes out to.
They, they were, they were looking for a way to grant some relief when, when the, there was a hardship in meeting the frontage requirements. So they, they, they enacted a special permit which would allow the planning board to reduce the frontage under certain circumstances. That's not really what we're trying to do here.
Gotcha, 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 okay, so.
We're not trying to reduce the frontage.
Right, however, you said also that Newbury Port would be better for us, but could we combine the Newbury Port, what works, and with the West Newbury? And come up with something that's.
I think they'd different approaches, I mean, you've got a question for an engineer, frankly. I, I'm having a little hard time envisioning a Newbury Port version. It, it appears to me that a lot of thought went into it.
Right.
Okay, but kind of in, in my mind's eye, trying to picture it's a little more difficult, or how it's going to work as a practical matter.
Right.
Maybe, um, whereas, again, simplicity has a lot to offer, I think.
Well, yeah, then, exactly, exactly. I mean, it's huge, because there's so much going on when you have a lot anyway. There's so many variables that the better off, you know, the easier we can make it for people to understand what we're trying to do, which is at the end game.
Right.
To make sure that safety is.
Because ultimately, what people are going to want to know is why.
Right, so safety, right, so would it safe, would it still be safe, right?
Why we're recommending it.
Right, yeah, okay, so.
But our, our. So, I mean, you'd only have to maintain a hundred feet back, twenty feet from the, from the frontage, so.
Right, and even, even, even so, I mean, I think then, unless the driveway provision is strong enough. I don't know, it kind of gets back to the objection I had to the, the Andover one, but maybe, maybe require some minimum distance. And if you, if you have to maintain some percentage of the, the frontage distance twenty feet back, then I think you would want to maintain some.
Significant percentage.
Some significant percentage going back to a building area.
So the thing is, what is that comfortable limit?
Right.
Is that forty percent?
Right, or is it a set number, is it forty feet, thirty feet? Certainly that would be more than twelve.
So, if we don't, are we just going to have like a modified pork chop?
Yeah.
Because that's a little loud. Because.
I'm trying to figure out.
No, because that will.
Which meat do we kind of?
So we want to encourage our developers to.
Let's stick with hockey stick, that might be.
Hockey stick is what he was showing.
It's a yin lot.
So, because I, I think we're at a point, at least I, I envision, where we're going to see more and more development of agricultural properties, right?
Absolutely.
And so, it's what, what, what is comfortable to the community in that process to achieve an outcome that, that is really, where you want to be. Appropriate, considering the blocks, considering where they're going to be, public safety, all the, all those other factors.
And given that we're dealing with, you know, fairly narrow lots, and in some cases, certainly long, high load, and other parts of town. So, you know, I could imagine somebody trying to, to do some building lots that were offset a little bit. So, I, I don't know.
Would MPSC have any model language in thing?
Um, I could certainly ask. There's a little bit of transition right now, but I can, I can ask Gerard. Since he does, since he deals with the mapping for all of our communities, he may have seen some, some lot configurations and some related language that would help.
Do we have an, an idea or a feeling for how much of the town has the potential to change its appearance?
Definitely long time, I mean, people are going to get more and more imaginative about getting out back, getting things developed down there, you know.
Yeah, because of the lots, in some cases, get a lot of water out back as opposed to the street frontage they have now.
Which is exactly the situation we were dealing with earlier. You had basically two rectangular lots, one lot, but they were two rectangles, connected, offset rectangles, connected by this little neck of land. And they were trying to get out, out to the back portion.
And is this where we are getting out and putting a road in?
No, they have, they, in that case, they were putting a road in, but the frontage that was shown on the road was, was, you know, the hockey sticks and the twelve foot driveway side by side.
Yep.
With the property lines being defined.
What it was basically, if, if, we, we have an OSRD, Open Space Residential Development Special Permit, okay? And in order to, I don't, correct me if I get any of this wrong, Martha. But in order to apply to the OSRD, and there are certain advantages to the developer. You have to show what a conventional subdivision plan could, could be supported on. What this property could support as a conventional subdivision plan. So they came up with this kind of really extreme subdivision plan, saying, hey, we can get ten units, twelve units this way. So now you have to get it, give us twelve units under the OSRD. And we just weren't buying that this was a viable yield plan or subdivision plan. And this is all just a very informal discussion, and I think we're going to see the developer this Wednesday.
Potentially, yes.
On, with a new plan.
But this, this type of thought process is healthy to have, so that we have an understanding of where we want to go, what's appropriate.
But in an extreme case, someone could come forward and present this, which arguably technically meets all the requirements of our, of our subdivision control regulations, but.
And there's something.
And so.
Not that I wanna throw something way out there that's, that's kooky.
Okay.
But it goes along the thought of development. Do we, should we, as a community, as a coastal community, take some consideration into what's going on with our coastal environment? One, because of, you know, what's gonna happen with it, and two, because of water supply. I'm sorry.
No, I mean, they're, they're good considerations, I think, though that.
Wait, does that fit in anywhere here?
I mean, that, that certainly fits into things like master plan recommendations and things like that. I'm not sure that at this point we can take it into account. It's a whole other issue.
Although, I'm, I'm thinking that, do we say, like, you know, at this point in time, it doesn't make sense to put a house within five hundred feet of the oceanfront? Does that, you know, or, or your?
We can't, we, you know, we can't do that, we can't prohibit that. We can't, you know, we can't even tell them to elevate the house higher than what the building code requires. So, I mean, that could be considered a taking and we have to, you know, to prohibit development compared to five hundred feet. Um, the building code doesn't prohibit development in a flood plain.
Yeah.
Um, so I think we have to be cautious. As much, as much as we feel that it would be appropriate because we know that the marshes are gonna continue migrating westward and that areas that are buildable right now probably won't be in fifty years or less. But, you know, we can't, we can't say, and we know this is gonna happen, so we shouldn't do that now.
Well, it's, but I'm, I'm also thinking safety. I mean, if you have developers that like a piece of land and has squeezed five lots out of it, we know that in ten years, there's not gonna be water there because it's gonna be a sandization process. You know, are we thinking?
I think that would be a more common issue.
Well, it's certainly involved and it gets, you know, it gets back to the state level D P and, and building code and.
I think it's a, to digress a little bit.
No, those, I mean, those are really very serious concerns.
But the insurance companies have done a lot.
That we can address the issues of plow mileage through this.
So let's get back to dimensional, just disregard what I said.
So I, I think we kind of have to take it one step at a time. There's an known problem that, you know, we feel we need to deal with. So we're not, can't wait to see these situations.
So from a planner's standpoint, if you had the world, and you consider, this is how I would do it, how would you wanna do it?
Well, it depends on where the world is.
Here.
You know, being, being a Libra, we say, well, it could be this or it could be this, depending.
That's a compliment.
So, and I don't really mean it to be, but, but a lot of it, it, it's really situational. So I'm not, you know, I'm not sure that one's, one solution fits all. So I think finding something that, that provides some, some latitude. And, you know, as I think about it, I'm kind of agreeing with you that maybe taking, taking that square and putting it right up at the frontage and saying it has to be this is not gonna be the best solution for us and our situation. But ensuring that we have some reasonable distance back from the road that's more than five feet and some reasonable width, getting back to some building area, um, would be helpful.
So.
And for me.
A hundred feet from the road, and you have to go to a different way, a different dimension.
You know, whether you have to keep eighty percent of the frontage or fifty percent of the frontage. Do, you know, I, I don't know, but I, I, I do agree that it should be something that's easily understood.
Right now, it's only twenty.
Well, I mean, right now, it's nothing. You know, they can, they can take that frontage five feet back and then.
So let's just throw some numbers out, see.
Yeah, so just a starting point, yeah, that's not a subject.
So, and, and, and understanding that we're gonna bring this by the chief and say, hey, what makes sense to you? You know, we say, you think this, does that not make sense to you? So, no, I think you should do that with this, let's always throw some, a blueprint out there.
And just sort of going back to previous conversations, if, um, if the driveway is, you know, some, some length and he wants twenty feet and you're looking at a ten foot setback, that would at least get us to a minimum of forty feet wide back to a building area.
And that might be enough, you know, or at least better than what we got.
Right, so if you've got, and maybe it is some combination of these. If you, if you have to maintain some percentage of the frontage for at least the front yard setback and then say forty feet back to the building area and that building area, you need to put the, the Groveland circle, um, in it.
That would be a.
Does that help us get away from?
Yeah, I think it'd be hard to explain the town, maybe not.
You'd have to have diagrams.
Yeah.
So if you had the forty feet, that would be about a third of the road frontage. What, what are they getting away with now, twenty feet?
Well, they were trying to get away with twelve.
Twelve, that would be the bad, obviously the bad, they don't, they get a car down there.
Right, right.
Again, I think our, our minds are going to long driveways, cause that's, that's, I think, where our concern is.
Right.
Cause that's how this, this, this.
Right, they, they would have been impractical without that, you know, if we had that type of thing.
I mean, if you were, if we were to change that to, to minimal, I would think would be forty feet. With ten feet on either side of the driveway.
Of the twenty foot.
The twenty foot driveway, right.
Yeah. I mean, that would be minimal. I don't know if they can do.
So now you're doing sixty feet, you're roughly fifty percent of the, of the frontage, a little under.
Twenty, ten, ten.
Yeah.
Yeah, forty would be about a third of there.
Yeah, but then, I mean, if you add the additional twenty feet for ten, ten on each side, you're at sixty feet wide. So that corridor would have to be at least sixty feet wide, which is really what we're dealing with. And then we still need the, um, the required frontage to hundred twenty five feet at some point.
So you're trying to.
Yeah, roughly, a little, a little.
Is that a comfortable limit?
Uh-huh.
It leaves a room for things to move, move in and out of that.
Which really what it's all about, I mean, when you get down with subdivision control, it's all about safety and access.
And, you know, you get into snow removal and stuff too with the twelve foot wide driveway and it's storm near like two thousand fifteen, I get it.
This is a serious problem, yeah, you don't trouble with that, if you're lucky.
Snow removal crew, room to move the snow, you know what I mean? Just so people could still get in and out.
We keep getting back to the issue of safety because that's justification for all this whole thing.
Why, to me, that's, that's really what it's all about.
Right, so we use that as our guide.
Do you get a house fire with no water supply and they have to keep running a tank of, you know, out of there or?
Well, yeah, they, I mean, they, they're out there and say, well, the house is gonna be sprinkled and that's what's.
I gotta tell you, one inch, that's, 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 that's regarded as.
Yeah.
It, it, that's ridiculous.
But, but the point is, if, if, if you've got an inch of fire, you've gotta be able to get the ambulance in there, you know.
With all the weapon on site.
All the weapon on site, and that's what you gotta do.
Too, cause of, cause of ACLS runs at the same time and, you know, basically the ambulance, so, yeah, you know, it's.
Getting crowded down there.
Yeah, I mean, it's one thing if, if you, if you dwell in this twelve feet off the road, like, or about twenty feet setback. It's, it's another thing when it's three quarters of a mile.
And that exists.
I think it was four tenths of a mile was building on Gobles, the one we were talking about by my breath, can't see.
Hey, so if we don't have a road coming down that, or a cul-de-sac, right, we're gonna have this issue. Most of them are cul-de-sac.
Yeah, see, the maximum cul-de-sac length, uh, as a right is what, five hundred feet? So what they draw, what, what the developer's trying to do, and they're business people, they're trying to maximize the profit, they can respect that. But they'll put in the five hundred foot cul-de-sac and then get all of these hockey ship, hockey stick shapes coming off of that into the back lane, you know, with, with the, with the access problems that, that, that presents.
Right.
You know?
Okay.
Yeah, they, you're saying the frontage, the frontage for the cul-de-sac is on the road, but then the frontage of the cul-de-sac isn't there?
Well, they have to get their frontage on the cul-de-sac, which is a lot, I mean, if you've got a hundred and fifty feet on high road, whatever you got, you're not gonna get more than one lot out of that unless you put in the cul-de-sac and then get these odd shaped lots that are taking their, their, you'll see an example, but I think one's there, and something close to it. Be easier to envision, a little, little more imagined.
Larry, you've really recently been very important, okay, so we have the structure, what about the safety of people who are trying to do their job?
Absolutely, absolutely, you know. Uh, you know, it's, it's one thing, uh, you know, on a nice spring day to get down there. It's another thing if it's two A M. on February, a snowstorm.
Right, you've got snowbanks on the other side.
You've got snowbanks, you've got ambulances, you've got police cars.
Ice, you have a slope on a hill, take it up to it.
Right, so there are gonna be issues that are untenable just by the natural settings. However, in advance of that, we need to think what works best, okay? Never mind the worst case, where there's a terrible storm and nobody can get down, there are lots of ice and everything. But what about when it's just a normal situation? What is required from a safety standpoint? And then work our way to really get through with that.
Well, I, I, I think in times, in terms of the, the driveway width and that type of stuff, we, I mean, you've almost, you know, get some input from, from public safety. But, yeah, it's almost gonna be a case by case analysis. We, we won't be able to solve every, every problem.
Absolutely.
Kind of, absolutely, that's what they are, I remember.
And, and there may very well be a situation, where you look at this and say, yeah, you know, the regulations are good, but then do we hush in this particular circumstance? And that's where the variance would come in.
Right, exactly.
I was gonna say that's.
Can't create the perfect.
Because all of these things we're talking about, again, I, I think any hardship would have to be caused by the shape of the lot, the topography or the soil conditions, which is exactly the issues you go for the, like, Z B A areas, you know.
Okay.
The grounds are variance, I should say. I mean, it's.
The difference between now and twenty years, some of the developments that went in. You can't get, barely get two cars down some of those.
But land's becoming more and more valuable and, and, and developable land is becoming more and more scarce and I'm just gonna see these, they've been going on in Newbury for years, all the infill projects, all the carriage houses that are becoming duplexes and, you know.
Right.
Whatever, and, and that's not, you know, progress is fine, but we just want it to be responsible, you know.
We're still wanting to move and grow, there's a rest, everything, you know, big time. All of a sudden it ramps up and then the town is overwhelmed by what's being proposed. So that's why we need something right now that's, that's understandable, A, that requires and that needs the safety requirement, B, right?
To me, that's, and that's what it's all about. Like, if somebody wants to live a half a mile off the main road and plow their own driveway, that's their business as long as nobody else is being impacted by it.
Right.
You know, but again, I, I, I really do think that we need to think about safety first as much as.
Okay.
And that's it.
But maybe to a certain degree, we're getting people from the wrong places and stuff, but, uh, but, you know, you know, like, so far.
Now, that is a fool's.
You can't think stupid, I see.
You can't think stupid.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I'm being, I'm unnecessarily sarcastic, but, you know.
Getting back to our, our kind of examples, where would we like to hone in on this?
I don't know. I don't know.
Yes, you do, you have an instinct.
I don't.
What's your gut type?
I think either the modified West Newbury.
Right, which is what you said.
Or the Newbury Port version is probably the best of, of these, of these examples. But I certainly have an open mind to, um, and maybe you combine the two.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, um, or combine the two, or we may actually be repulsive things and, um, and if you guys are open to it, I could, I could do some sketches based on these scenarios, some of these scenarios as well.
Please include that.
I, I think it, it's great to, to do some sketches.
Yeah, great. And sort of see what the implications are, just thinking about our schedule and, um.
We have to do this via email.
Well, we can't, we can't do it by email, I mean, I can send sketches out, but we can't discuss them.
Discuss them, right.
But, you know, we may wanna have a follow-up meeting at least on that, or follow-up discussion, um, soon, I mean.
So we take the first line from, I say, West Newbury, right?
West Newbury, yeah, that's the third example.
And what are we, what do we take from the Newbury Port piece? Because it's not as applicable, given what's going on in Newbury.
Well, I think the difference, for me, looking at Newbury Port, Newbury is, I, West Newbury. Newbury is a combination, as far as the way the land structures of two communities. Part of it is coastal and part of it is interior, inland. I feel it's not like inland, so, and the other part of Newbury is more coastal, so the. Right. The, the way the land is laid out, what's in the land and the topography and all that are very different. I think we have to have, we have to have dimensional regulations which we can apply to any place in town. You know, we've got, um, you know, we have, we have a lot of non-conformity lots and so this isn't applying to that. This is applying to lots that would be big enough to be subdivisible, you know, based on our forty thousand square feet or sixty or eighty thousand, depending on the year, it's a little too family.
What, what about this, ju- just to keep it moving forward? Suppose we did something like, the width of a lot should be equal to at least ninety percent of the required frontage at the front yard setback, and lot should be laid out in such a manner so that a square will size equal to eighty percent, blah, blah, blah.
And where'd you get that? And where's the second part?
Uh, I don't, in the Newbury Port.
Okay.
So, after, after frontage requirements. And at least for discussion purpose, cause remember, this is gonna go to the selectmen, they're gonna look at it. They're gonna have some questions, then they're gonna send it back to us for, for public hearing and modifications and.
So.
In short, we buy a little time.
So the Newbury Port language brings me back to a geometry class.
Yeah.
That's what I, that's what I, I look at this, I'm thinking to myself, what the hell? I love geometry, though, is it gonna be, is it gonna be digestible for folks?
Well, that's why I think you really need some diagrams, but, you know, maybe, maybe going to the Groveland model would be circle, a hundred foot circle, I mean, this is, this is what I've sketched up, I've really came to talk. So, you know, so here's our hundred and twenty five feet of frontage next down to, you know, whatever ninety percent would be a hundred and ten feet or whatever. And then if you've got a funky lot, you keep a minimum distance of forty feet going back to your buildable area.
So you still got a sixty foot car over there.
Well, this would be if this is twenty, and if this is twenty for the driveway and then ten and ten buffer on either side. So you're looking at, at forty, forty feet there, um, so, you know, thirty percent of your frontage in there, you know, say.
Will the chief be happy with twenty feet?
Um, for the driveway?
Yeah.
Um, he had indicated before that he could live with twenty feet.
Cause the idea is to get two, two.
Two trucks.
Two trucks to, yes.
Probably twenty four or something, but, you know, but, or twenty, I mean, our minimum road width is twenty two feet. So hopefully he would be able to live with that.
So you go with the first line, the width of the lot shall be equal to, then you go from yard setback up to lot should be laid out in such a manner so that it's square, right?
Or a hundred foot diameter circle, that's eighty percent of our frontage.
Okay, either one of those.
You know, and then after that, the lot can, you know, kind of basically do whatever if it comes to a triangle or whatever.
Right, right. And that works for me.
But it, it goes back to the unknown that I was objecting to in the end over one about, kind of, the, the buildable area where a house lot is, but maybe if they're laying it out, they're gonna have to identify with a house location. So if they don't, maybe, I think it's okay.
Well, then they're gonna have to build the house, wouldn't they?
Right, so it's not our job to do that, right, so they would have to do that. So, you know, if you end up with a lot that's sort of, you know, like this, you've got a triangular, but you've got that building envelope, you've got the forty feet getting back to it and at least twenty feet. So, you know, if you end up with a lot that's sort of, you know, like this, you've got a triangular, but you've got that building envelope, you've got the forty feet getting back to it, and at least twenty feet instead of five in the front. I mean, I still, I still personally don't like this because, because it's still, it's. It's, it's, I don't know. But given, given the land and the lots that we're dealing with, maybe it's unfair to say that somebody's gotta have, you know, a square this big right in their frontage, because that just may not be possible.
Where are you gonna see something like this in most cases? Is this is going, this frontage is not gonna be off an existing road, it's gonna be off a proposed cul-de-sac.
Right.
You know.
Okay, yeah, makes sense.
The road, they use a cul-de-sac to get in there.
Right, right, and then take their frontage off the cul-de-sac.
Right, and we have, we have some of these existing on high road that did take their frontage off the high road. So none of these recommendations, during, during, just to go, um, is a deal right for the contract? Because they still have land to take, they have to stick with them, they still have, of safety issues over the time.
Yeah, well, what, what the developer's gonna have to look at is, in view of the regulations, what they think they can go there and whether or not it's feasible to, to do it. It's gonna impact the sale price of lots of the larger processes.
Then they could.
Then they could appeal here. For the most part, developers don't wanna violate us, they wanna go in, not what they should do, and build it.
They, they don't. They violate the plans.
Right.
So the, the first part of your drawing, the first twenty feet.
Down here, yeah.
Do we need that?
Well, we need something.
No, no, hey, but, but, but how, how far do we want it to be?
And if it were, in my ideal world, it would be far to back. But, you know, I think, I think setting it based on our front yard setback is not an unreasonable. You said five feet, no, twenty feet.
Twenty.
I'm sorry. Yeah.
If you're doing, you'd like to stay at forty feet.
Oh.
Yeah, twenty feet is a lot of room.
It's not a lot, it's not a lot of room.
Like the list table, a little more.
So if we think forty feet, cause we got anything that we come up with that's gonna be relief of that, potentially.
I would think something most meaningful, might be an extreme case, but it's not, but yeah, the variance would be the, would be the vehicle.
So the language would be two, two times the front yard setback, if we were to say forty feet.
If you wanted to hit the forty feet, if you say forty feet, you can say two times the same front yard setback. Well, it's plenty, it puts a setback there, so it's still the same.
Uh, the underlying zone is still the same, so it's forty thousand square feet, a hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage. There are almost no lots down here, and I don't think there's any subdivisible lot, because four years on that. Or say Montgomery Park, or, you know, Byfield Center. These are the, the bigger subdivivable lots.
Forty feet stops that, stops that.
Just see. Yeah, and I'm just looking at our dimensional requirements, the commercial highway, commercial highway A, uh, the, uh, I've got fifty feet as our front yard setback. So if somebody were creating a lot, they're going to need business and light investment, for example. It would be, you know, using, using this language, it would be ninety percent of the frontage, fifty feet back. Is that reasonable?
Say that again.
Over commercial.
Over commercial, right. So if we were creating, the twenty-foot setback is in, you know, the residential districts, fifty feet, there is commercial highway, commercial highway A and business and light investment. So they're maintaining some amount, some percentage of the frontage, and those cases would be fifty feet back, forty feet back.
Totally consistent.
Totally consistent.
I have no problem with consistency, but it says our tax, our tax rate is consistent. I like that.
So.
Yeah, you're saying fifty feet in off the.
Right, so off of Route One, for example.
Yeah, that's true. Be on high district.
Would also apply to Pearson Plaza. Parts of South. So shall we use that as a starting?
Yes, I think we need to, we need to.
Cause, cause I know, at least for further discussion.
Yeah, and this is a sentence, right, but I'll do something. It's an informed decision.
So let's say that this is what we fully would come up with, cause I would think this, the most likely, if I'm pop, this, this is what they've come to us with. That's, because our spam, and it comes back to us, how are you members of this?
I don't know, like, the driveway's easy.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that's, people can, you know, can accept that and understand it, and, and it, it, it's gonna be difficult.
Cause we want something that's gonna succeed.
It, it, it's gonna sound like we're saying we're trying to discourage development, that's what town meetings.
How does that work? I mean, I don't see that.
No, and, well, that's not the, that's not the point, but I think that's the way it's gonna be perceived.
Hmm, we have to change, we have to work on that.
Yeah.
Those projections.
So, I, you know, I, I mean, I, I think the easiest thing for people to understand is sort of a public safety type of approach, I'm not sure that people appreciate it, and it's really necessary.
That's the overriding consideration.
There's gonna be somebody out there who has a hot shit plot, who says, hey, wait a minute, I can't stop people from building my house.
Right.
Well, you said they have the options, options, they'll have an option over there.
Right.
Yes, yeah.
And then it's.
See, I would be inclined, rather, rather than try to show them a whole bunch of charts and graphics and everything, just keep it simple.
I agree.
I think we learned that from last year.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and, and that's what we, we think we need to do this to prevent odd-shaped lots and to assure, you know, safe access for public safety officials.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you very much, and sit down.
Right, and that's all right, so.
It's gonna, I'm gonna get the end of the crowd that shows up.
Always does, but, but we can handle that. But even if we, even if this doesn't fly, if we can get a language regarding the driveway setbacks passed, that will help, um.
Oh, I think it'll help tremendously.
Yeah.
Yeah, e- even if we just go with the driveway amendments, I think it's gonna help tremendously.
Yeah, I think so.
So.
Some of they should be two separate articles.
Two separate articles, does it make sense, Mark, that then, if you, if you, the perception's going to be that we're trying to stop development by having this large swath that needs to be, you know, persons might have a large swath that needs to be, there, does it make more sense to have that swath?
I don't think so, because if you're, you know, if you've got some people who are trying to put in a long driveway, and the chief wants a twenty-foot driveway.
No, I'm talking about the, your, your.
You just talk about the front.
Oh, oh, this, this one.
First rectangular, yeah, first rectangular, does it make sense that, right.
Right here.
That, that'd be twenty feet, not forty feet or fifty feet. If that, if that would be the, like, interpreted as a rate limit for, you know, you're just trying to really develop.
I think that's, that's the way it might be viewed, might be perceived, and maybe there'll be a lot of people that wanna do just that, I don't know, but, so it depends on the crowd.
Right, I mean, twenty, twenty feet, if, if, if you use a language that, that, that distances our existing front yard setback, whether it's twenty feet residential or fifty feet, that at least is a number that already exists, we're not trying to make up some other arbitrary number.
So the argument could be that we're just trying to complement what is already existence for our EBI.
Clarify.
Clarify.
Yeah, it's not tight, accurate, I suppose, but, uh, clarify the intent. Well, it's gonna depend on the selectmen's attitude, too, I mean, you know.
Right, if there's some opposition.
Well, we can't anticipate that right now.
Well, we'll get some feedback when we send it to them.
Right, and having discussions with, um, some of them.
I, I would say that for our purposes now, at this point in time, go with your wish list, go, go with what you would like to see. It's a lot easier to, to peel it back than just add, it's a little bit, it's a little.
Well, that's true, just in terms of the process, we can always make it less stringent, we can't make it more stringent.
Right.
Right, so it's in negotiating.
Okay, go back to fifty.
Yeah, fifty feet.
Or two times.
Two times, yeah, you, you wanna tie it, tie it into the setback for a particular district. Well, let's, let's just go that way for now, and, uh, at least give us, gives us something to, maybe to get the town council to, to the engineer.
That's what I was, that's what I was gonna suggest, so.
Lisa may look at this and say, now, we tried this in such and such, and it didn't work.
Didn't work, right, right. So, um, that was my thought as well, I think, uh, I can talk to Joe, um, I can talk to Girardi, I think we'll see, and try to do a couple sketches. So at least we can visualize what it actually means.
We just don't look broken, that's, you know, to get that.
Okay.
Okay, so that does dimension, driveway and giraffe.
Uh, I, I think if we hear back from the chief, I think both of these driveway amendments would be advisable. Uh, just hear back from the chief and what he's comfortable, at what point, at what driveway width he would like to see, and at what length of driveway that needs to kick in. Is that correct?
Yeah.
You know what I mean? And then the other question was, do we wanna just combine these into one motion, one, one article, or present them as two articles at town meeting?
I'd be inclined to do two, because if, if.
One fails, yeah.
Yeah, if one fails, at least, I mean, at least if we can get the driveway passed.
I think we've done some control, yeah, we've had some, certain amount of control.
Yeah, I think so too, I mean, that would be another thing.
Even if the first one fails, maybe they'll take a page or two, you see it happen, honestly.
No, that's true, yeah.
All right, well, we shut down and blame, what are this article, well, we give the next one.
It's so easy to understand, so it's not gonna be.
Well, that's the thing, yeah.
Right, right, so, um, I mean, certainly I would ask Lisa for her guidance on that as well, but I think my gut is that doing them as two separate articles would be the safer way to go. Okay.
Thank you, Larry.
If you've got a direction, it may all change.
So there's one other dimensional note that, that town council has suggested that we look at, um, which I still need to, I've got a justification from her for it. But if you look at this table of dimensional requirements, footnote number two, um, is a little ambiguous. And, um, it led to a decision in a court case for two seventy-seven High Road, um, that was not in the town's favor. Council's, council's opinion was changing the lot lines for two seventy-seven, basically took away the grandfathered status of the existing dwellings on, or structures on that lot, which aren't too close to the property line, front yard property line. So she had suggested that we change this footnote to make it a little bit more clear, that it doesn't refer to existing buildings, but is, uh, refers to new structures that are being built. She referred me to the Newbury Port, uh, ordinance, and a front yard setback, established front yard setback, and she wasn't a hundred percent, um, in support of this language, but I'm gonna hand it out, um. So the idea is that if you're building a new structure, um, on a street, and you have an established setback, so, for example, ours is twenty feet, but there's an established setback that's smaller than that, that's already been set by adjacent buildings, that you could build a new structure in, in line with those, with that existing front yard setback, as opposed to the one that's required under the zoning. And this says that it would be the structures on either side, or the two adjacent principal structures if it's, if it's a corner lot. So this is another one that I think will be, we'd have to be very clear in what the justification is, so I was gonna talk a little bit further with council to try and get some, uh, some backup language from her. And also be difficult, probably, to explain at town meeting, but.
Mother and I disagreed on this.
Right.
It, basically what happened is, uh, this was a, like, two-hundred-and-fifty-year-old house or something like that, that didn't meet the current setback requirements, but was on a much larger lot. So they subdivided the lot, but the house, the, the, the remaining house lot met, except for the setback requirements, met all other zoning requirements, dimensional requirements. Big deal was my, was kind of my attitude, I don't understand why that's a problem.
Council's opinion has been that whenever you change, if you take a lot and the situation that's been grandfathered, and you make any changes, the grandfathering gets lost, and so.
Well, she's probably right, but what saved it in this case is the footnote.
Well, that's, yeah, that's what the.
I mean, do we have? Is, is this a solution in search of a problem?
You know, is that the question?
Yeah, I mean, so what? I have no problem with it, if the house has spent there for two hundred years, and everything else matches, let it stay, but I, you know, but that's just me. Reasonable people can disagree.
Absolutely.
Well, I think I agree with you, because then that could just snowball into different properties throughout the entire community.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, you know, I don't, I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem with the court's interpretation based on the footnote, and I, I don't have a problem with the result. And I think Lisa's probably, but for the footnote, she'd probably technically correct, you're creating a new non-conformity.
Right, right, right.
But I just don't see it needs a fix, you know, but.
I've been advised that it does, so.
Okay, well, that's fine, I've been wrong before, more, more than once.
No, and it's not, you know, I don't, I wouldn't say that you're wrong, I think there, you know, there's interpretation here, although she spoke to a lot of people in, in this process, and they were all in agreement with her.
That it needs to be fixed because of all of these colonial houses we get.
No.
But I, I mean.
We have, and we have a lot of situations, it's true, that, that all of a sudden, non-conformities could be created.
Maybe, maybe.
But, you know, in this particular case, we would have supported a variance, um, and that was her recommendation for the applicant, um, they chose to go to court instead.
She kinda makes my point, but.
Perhaps.
Maybe if, if it's the right result, then why would we wanna fix it, but.
If we can, if we can avoid somebody having to take it down to court, and not have it defend a position, it makes sense to try and come about a approach.
I'm not gonna state up in town meeting and oppose it, but I just, I just don't see.
You can't, or a whore, we all agree, what it would be.
Vote, vote present, when you, when you, when you take a vote on this one, I'm gonna vote present. No, in all seriousness, I keep it open mind, so, and I haven't really talked to Lisa or her for a justification.
And it might, might actually be good for the two of you.
Yeah.
Conversation.
I would kinda tend to our town council to give us guidance and try to find that instrument that makes the most sense, cause you, you don't wanna bump into this account if we don't, we don't.
Right.
Well, what it's gonna do, it's gonna require someone in this homeowner's situation to apply for variance, which frankly, I don't think you can, if anybody appealed, I, I don't think the variance would be held up, would be upheld, would she, Larry?
Right, unless, um, although I was thinking about it afterwards, it might not necessarily need to be there, it's, we do have a provision for a special permit or findings for non-conformities, so if you could go back.
Oh, that's fine, and then I'd be much more comfortable with that.
So, you know, that, that's already a mechanism that EBA has.
Then I'd, I'd be much more comfortable with that. Then I, I'd be much more comfortable with that, you know.
So, um, I am gonna talk to her about that as well.
You can tolerate, I'm giving you hard time, but.
Talking about discussions.
Larry's really.
They're gonna see you.
So, anyway, that, uh, that is, I guess, T V D.
Okay. All right. So, again, I think that we're trying to work on, um, so, we're gonna need some work. Do you want to discuss housing, uh, inclusionary, to those now?
You know, um, I think if, this is just my opinion, we're not going to really be able to put anything forward for town meeting. I would say, let's work on it, but.
And what's it going to require for it to work?
It requires development of a new bylaw. And there, well, there are two, two housing-related things here, one is if you're looking at inclusionary, that would be a home and bylaw.
And so let's just talk about what that's about, sort of present the same page, understanding. Find which one.
So that would, that would mean, we can't require, my understanding is that we can't require a developer to build an affordable unit, um, for a subdivision, but we can provide incentives. We do that in our open space residential development right now. So if, um, if a developer builds one affordable unit, um, he or she could get a bonus unit. So, a Z E O plan, uh, say it comes up with nine units, and he says, I'm going to do the dedicated affordable unit, then that would take him to ten. And I think there are actually provisions for two affordable units depending on the level of affordability, or two bonus units depending on the level of affordability. So, we could also write a bylaw that would provide a bonus if somebody were doing a dimensional subdivision, provide a bonus, um, law, for example, if an affordable unit were to be recruited as part of the mix. But, I've been advised that under the law, we can't require the affordable unit, we can just incentivize it. So, that would be.
So this would be for typical subdivision, say, the, the, he or she, I should kind of, I was gonna throw a she every time I was saying he.
It did a bonus, and then it backed off.
The developer could be incentivized and receive some, you know, additional unit for, for doing that. And I think, Arthur and I continue to have a discussion, maybe that we can try and bring any sort of affordable units into, uh, the development process, by whatever sort of incentives we can put into place, opening that door makes sense. You know, so for a typical subdivision, we could start opening that door, it makes sense. So understanding that this would, this would probably, for fall, if we were to.
Potentially.
You know, get this together, um, so there's something to think about, you know, and to discuss, you know, and to do the fall work on. So that's what the base of this is.
And Westover has an inclusionary bylaw, um, which I will admit I haven't talked through in detail, but.
I, I don't recall.
But it, you know, ties into the bigger discussion about implementation of our housing production plan, and inclusionary zoning is certainly one mechanism for trying to increase affordable housing in town, but it's difficult because for every X number of dwelling units, you're only getting one affordable, so it doesn't really move our, our needle significantly one way or the other.
Yeah, it would move like three percent or something like that.
Three point five, yeah. Very small, uh, which kind of gets into the next thing that I had on the agenda here, which was taking a look at our table of use regulations to see, you know, whether, whether we could amend that to allow multifamily. Right now, we allow multifamily up to four by special permit in the Evergreen Business District and the, um, Byfield Village Business District. Anything greater than four, we don't allow, so that doesn't allow us to do, and, you know, any kind of larger apartment building for. So we need to take a look at that as well.
And I guess what the argument for lottery?
That gets into lottery, gets into water, gets into septic. But multi, multifamily, greater than four, and mixed use are both mechanisms that could be used to, to create, you know, some affordable rental housing or.
Is this only Byfield?
Uh, right now, the Evergreen, uh, Business District, which is around Town Hall and Byfield Village, we allow multifamily.
Up to four.
Up by special permit. So that's how the Leibert School was converted into condominium units, and that's how the.
Methodist church.
Methodist church was converted into condominiums.
Right.
Yeah. Because those were both four.
Right.
Required a special permit.
This one considered, considered affordable, though.
No, those weren't, I had nothing, so I had no idea with affordability. The one that I was hoping might actually be affiliated to that, it's not selling for it, but a friendly forty B would have done, would have been the holistic health center.
No.
So, you know, five, could have gotten five units out of that, potentially. And if it were a friendly forty B, it wouldn't have to meet our zoning requirements, but that's going in another direction.
Yeah, but the data.
That's a salt.
It's next to it.
Yep.
It's now Tech Data or whatever it's called.
That would have been a salt location.
It would have been a great location, but, um.
Opportunities seem to slip.
So, I did talk to a developer about it, um, and that Jared, just, he didn't know that it was feasible, unfortunately. Based on, um, you know, I, I think he wasn't actually interested in going the, the friendly forty B route.
Okay.
But these are discussions I think will be really good, explore, I don't know, explore within the C, you know, maybe create ways to, to, to look at this situation. It's gonna get a little bit more, communities unique, because of our infrastructure, so we do have to get creative.
And the need is there, and the need is very strong, so I don't know how to, how to get by.
All right, green communities, tell us the update.
So, green communities, um, it's something that, that we've been having discussions about on and off. I don't know if you guys are all familiar with what green communities is. So essentially, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a state program whereby if you meet certain criteria, you can be designated a green community, um, and then you're eligible for an initial infusion of money, which for us would be upwards of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and then you're eligible for certain grants after that, once you're designated. And the criteria really have to do with sort of renewable, green things. So, one of them is adopting what's called the stretch energy code, um, which is a zoning amendment. One is, um, making a commitment to, um, any new town vehicles, with certain exceptions, would be energy, you know, deficient.
Any new purchase.
New purchase. One is, um, committing to an energy reduction plan in all of the town-owned facilities. One is, uh, adopting zoning that would allow by right either renewable energy like solar or wind in certain parts of town, which I think for us would be difficult, we require a special permit right now. Or allowing research and development for renewables by right in certain parts of town. We already allow research and development in the business and light industrial district, and I think also commercial highway, so we've already got that one covered. So for zoning purposes, really, um, it would be adoption of the stretch code. When this was presented to the selectman about, about a year and a half ago, there was some concern about that, because it's a little bit more stringent than the state energy code. But, it's getting closer and closer, and it becomes a kind of a performance-based thing. Talking to Sam about it before he left, he was, at this point, very much in favor of doing it, because it's not, it's not such a stretch anymore. So I, I, I think it's a matter of probably bringing it back before the selectmen to see whether they would be support on moving forward with that. And, um, you know, I think the bylaw is basically already written, there's a model bylaw, so there's nothing really that we need to do, to do it, um, because we're getting, getting the buy on, buy-in to, to support it.
Where would that, where would bylaw pick that?
Um, I can send you.
I'd love to.
Okay.
Not too much trouble.
No, no. I'll send it, yeah, I'll send it to all of you.
Stretch.
Stretch program.
Yeah. And out of three hundred and fifty-one municipalities in Massachusetts, um, two hundred and seventy-eight have now become designated green communities in our region. Groveling is the only other one, as of far.
Something we really need to do.
We really should do it at this point.
And we should do that.
And what, just because they objected, is that?
No, it is.
And this actually came out back in, um, I'd say around, yeah, ten years ago, ten, eleven years ago, two thousand and nine. And at that point, we're just going into, into the reception, reception. Sam was very concerned at that point about sort of additional cost related to stretch of contractors and homeowners. And the difference is so small now, it's really insignificant. And cost savings long-term, our, our sound, so.
Let's do it, then. Thank you for seven minutes. I heard of it. And you say, two hundred and seventy-eight, uh, three fifty-one, or in.
Or in.
And we need to be in, so we should be in.
We should be in. Okay. I think Salisbury has gotten significant lots of money built through their initial sort of designation grant, and then.
Salisbury's ahead of us?
Yes, that's not, yeah, no, they're all ahead, they're all ahead of us, except for Groveling, they're all ahead of us.
Salisbury's moving leaps and bounds.
Yeah, they have to, in a lot of areas. Also have capacity that we don't have anyways, so. Anyway, so, um, I'll send that information to you all, and if, um, you know, if it seems like something that should be supported, then, then we'll get it before the selectmen, yeah.
Okay, so when, when would that happen? So we review it, and then we decide the next meeting or something?
Um, yeah, I mean, if I can, I've got, I'm in June for Wednesday, I do have just an update on something, so if I send it to.
Yeah.
Then we can discuss it again.
Okay, so it could be, we could all, maybe, maybe, maybe all agree, and then we'll go off to them?
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be kind of a two-step, one would be referring it to them for public hearing, as we need to do the other things, we're getting it before them sooner, just to kind of get their buy-in.
Sure, got it, okay, I see where their objections might lie.
Right.
And hopefully, they don't want anywhere.
Okay, our next steps.
So, next steps, I think, um, and to, you know, follow up on the discussion that we had today about dimensional requirements, and maybe talk to the chief and various other people, um.
Well, we've moved up on that, pretty much.
Right, I mean, I think we've got a direction, so we need to kind of, I think revisit that after discussions, and make sure that everybody feels comfortable.
Okay.
And then would you want to bring this back on Wednesday? Do you think we have time for that?
We probably don't have time to get it on the agenda for Wednesday.
Well, I've got a general discussion on the agenda for, you know, zoning, zoning amendment updates, um, you know, I think that would cover it, if we have any follow-up.
Do, well, there's certainly no, I'm in it, but do we need another workshop before we, before February second, February fifth?
I think we should.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, to kind of finalize what the recommendations will be.
And let's, let's, let's think about that. So if we were to do additional workshops, so, before February fifth, how are we thinking? We have our meeting the eighth and the twenty-second tonight. And I'm not one to try to glue all the things on the same date, just because I think it's easy to sprinkle things around. Does the twenty-seventh work for folks? Do that?
For workshop, for workshop?
Did you say twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh, Monday, twenty-seventh, yeah, I'm sorry, my, my voice.
It's okay, I don't hear.
It's fine with me.
Let's open three.
Okay, so, uh, we'll kind of shoot to have our, uh, zombie workshop, or let me just say workshop. And that is going to be the twenty-seventh, and we're going to start it at, uh, one o'clock, which is thirteen hundred dollars. Put that in there.
What day is that?
That's a Monday, Monday, the twenty-seventh.
So we got twenty-second and we got eight?
Twenty-seventh.
Right, but we have the eighth and the twenty-second.
And I recognize.
Right, so we can also discuss it on the twenty-second.
Okay.
We're just gonna think a little bit, choose a, this will matter, so we're ready to go.
And we're just kind of carrying zoning, zoning amendments, it's an ongoing thing right now, so we can discuss.
Okay, so you are next steps, and we, we got to dimensions, let's next up some other things.
Uh, right, so now, keeping off the, uh, the wireless communications.
Right, we may get a report sometime.
Right, right, so, um, I may be talking, I hope, David Maxine, in the next day or two.
Okay, that'll be interesting. Yeah, that seems like a no-brainer, I mean, getting people to agree.
Since our discussions, zombie workshops, we think we limited to those topics today, or can we discuss anything else?
I think we can discuss anything else, I would say.
All right, um, there are two things that I'd like to discuss.
Well, no, I mean, we can discuss zoning today.
Okay.
We can.
There are two other things I'd like to discuss at some point. So just to sign a format where we can do that.
Okay, in a regular meeting or a special meeting?
Because I want input.
Is it something you want to leave it to Jennifer, say?
Sure.
We have time to talk about that.
I gotta leave them around three forty, so.
Okay, we'll have to be, yeah, three thirty, okay, good, okay.
You'll get your meeting notice posted.
Yes.
By December.
Yeah.
So, more than that.
It's been a little, little bit, interestingly.
So we have our next date for a zoning workshop to continue, which would be the twenty-seventh of January at, you know, ten o'clock.
We'll assume here, unless, um, it's already booked, I'll check that and let you all know.
Good question, adjourned?
Ready to adjourn, motion?
Ready to adjourn.
Second, hold on, I love it. Great, discussion, none, have a favor.